Bring the special assembly meeting to order for August 5, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Hughes-Candice.
Here.
Ms. Adkison.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Bryson. Deputy Mayor Hale.
Here.
And we have absent this evening Willaki Doc and Ms. Wall and Mayor Wildin.
Here.
LaCorme is present.
Thank you for the land acknowledgement. We haven't had you, Ms. Hughes-Candice, for a while. Will you be willing to read that for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We would like to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juneau is on unceded Klingutland and wish to honor the indigenous people of this land. For more than 10,000 years, Alaskan Native people have been and continue to be integral to the well-being of our community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community, and to honor the culture, traditions, and resilience of the Klingut people. Gudal chish.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes-Candice. Approval of minutes, Madam Clerk, I mean, not Madam Clerk, I apologize. Ms. Hale.
Oh, I like that, Madam Hale, too, you know. I move approval of the July 25, 2024 special assembly meeting minutes, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. Public participation on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any members that have signed up? Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that will bring us to agenda topics. Little bit change for the assembly that we didn't know. For the new city attorney appointment, Mr. Palmer, that pesky attorney, reminded us that we had executive session on this, but we have not brought anything back to the public. So we will talk about it, and we will talk about a couple of the minor changes of her contract, but we won't appoint her until Wednesday special meeting before finance. So are we good, Mr. City Attorney? So anyway, we are pleased to announce Emily Wright as our next city attorney. Her start date will be August 26, 2024, and her annual salary will be $188,000. So along with that, we made an offer letter, and there has been some conversations back before, so I didn't think anything was too, rose too much to the top, but we should talk about them. Some changes to the initial offer letter that we gave was a 90-day notice to terminate employment that we would have to give, and consequently, she would have to give. So is everybody okay with that? And then also, her leave pay period, she would like to go from earning 8.3 hours to 11.1 hours per paid period, which is, which is common. And we did that for Mr. Palmer, I believe, when he started. Any objection to that? And then also, we have said we would like her to grow in place, so she asked for two annual trainings for the first year and the second year. And then after that, we paid us for one annual training or conference. And I see nods on that, so we are pretty good. So on Wednesday, we will put her contract out for the public to see, and then we will officially appoint her. But for right now, welcome to Ms. Wright. And I should also say that it was a very, very tough decision. We had two great candidates, and it was literally neck-to-neck to the very last vote. So appreciate both Megan Costello and Becky Convery for applying. It was a very tough one. And I also should thank the committee that did the city attorney work, and they did a lot of work chaired by Ms. Wall. And we had Ms. Hale, Mr. Bryson, and Ms. Adkison. Thank you on that one. So thank you for your extra time. And also, a huge thank you to Dallas Hardgrave, who did most of the work, and you just did some of the work. So with that, we will, any discussion on that whatsoever? Okay, with that, we will go to our ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is ordinance 2024-32, an ordinance establishing a waiver process for airport board appointments and temporarily waiving the three-tenant rule.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam City Manager. Madam Manager.
This ordinance establishes a process to waive the three-tenant rule for appointments to the airport board in Juneau. The three-tenant rule limits the number of airport board members who can be tenants to three. You can see that, they call it the three-tenant rule. This ordinance allows the assembly to temporarily waive this rule to point a fourth tenant if necessary due to low community interest in the position and the need to avoid prolonged vacancies that constrain the board and harm airport governance. The ordinance includes provisions to prevent conflicts of interest and requires the airport board to notify the assembly if tenant conflicts reduce the board's majority vote. I recommend the assembly introduce this ordinance and set it for public hearing at the next regular assembly meeting.
Thank you, Madam Manager. And we won't take public testimony on this ordinance because it's just an ordinance for introduction. So if you want to talk to this ordinance, you would do it at our next regular assembly meeting. Ms. Hale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the introduction of ordinance 2024-32, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, that motion passes. With that, we are adjourned.
Do you need a minute or two before we start?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hale. Yes, if you could give us about two minutes at ease.
Yep.
Thank you. We are going to be using the same Zoom link through the committee of the whole meeting, and so no need to disconnect and reconnect to a new Zoom. And we will be ready to begin, Madam Deputy Mayor, in just a moment.
I call the Assembly Committee of the Whole to order at 6:10 p.m. on August 5. I didn't ask, but Madam Mayor, would you be willing to do the land acknowledgement?
Certainly. We would like to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juneau is on Klingutland and wish to honor the indigenous people of this land. For more than 10,000 years, Alaskan Native people have been and continue to be integral to the well-being of our community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community, and to honor the culture, traditions, and resilience of the Klingut people. Gudal chish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. If it's okay, I'll note that we have everyone present with the exception of Ms. Wall and Willaki Doc, as we did for the special assembly meeting. LaCorme is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We move on to approval of agenda, and we have some agenda changes. Should we make those now? Yes. Madam Manager, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have three agenda changes for you tonight. The first item I would like to add as the number-one item on the agenda is a flood update. So we have Aaron Jacobs from the National Weather Service, who is online to give us the most updated modeling. We had anticipated that modeling at 7, but he went ahead and ran that a little bit early for this meeting. So that will give you the most up-to-date information on predictions for this evening's flood event. We also will be prepared to talk to you. We have Instant Commander Koch in the room, and we'll be prepared to talk to you about CBJ response and preparedness for this. And I would just also note that you don't have Deputy Manager Barr in the room now, although I know he's listening. We are just making sure that we can preserve resources for response over the next couple of days. So that is the reason why you don't see him. Any questions about that agenda change? I have two more. Okay. The next agenda change would be to move the item that's listed as number three, Floyd Dryden and Marie Drake Schools' proposed uses, up to the second item on your agenda after flood update. And again, that is to accommodate Director Koch, who will also need to retire to deal with emergency response duties. Any questions on that? All right. Then the third agenda change I'd like to make is to cross out Blueprint Downtown from the agenda. In addition to it being a very busy night with lots going on both in these walls and outside these walls, there's a bit of a packet snafu. I think we had some links that were not active in your packet to source documents, and so those links are being updated on the website so that you have all that information. And what we would request is that we just pump that to the September 4 meeting, and we'll give you a more robust presentation at that meeting.
Thank you. Are there any changes or objections to the agenda as changed? Thank you. Madam Mayor, or maybe I can just ask, are there any changes or objections to the August 28, 2023 Assembly Committee of the Whole draft minutes? Seeing none, those minutes are approved. We'll move on to flood update. Madam Manager.
Thank you. And if you could pull over Aaron Jacobs with National Weather Service. As I just mentioned, we're going to go ahead and let him give us a forecasting update, and then we will go into flood response details and answer any questions that you might have, as this is an evolving event.
Thank you. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me just fine?
Yes, and thank you for being here.
Great, thank you. Thank you for having me. So to start off, currently, the Menon Hall River is right around 12.61 feet, and that is above our moderate flood stage of 10 feet and continues to rise. It's been on a steady rise up all night and then through today, and we're going to continue to see the sharp rise as the forecast has, all the way up to a record, near record of 15.67 feet by around midnight to 1:00 in the morning. This is after doing some analysis of the real-time data, after we got some more information through today, and adjusting the forecast a little bit to have a little bit higher peak and a little bit sooner when that crest is going to happen. We will be going over a major flood gauge of around 14 feet and somewhere between 8:00 p.m. tonight, and then cresting again around 12:00 a.m. and coming down below moderate flood stage tomorrow around noon to like 4:00 p.m. tomorrow, as it will drastically come back down to normal conditions. I was just out and around the area, and luckily, around View Drive, there hasn't been as much flooding as we've seen in the past at these levels. There could have been some adjustment to the river from last flood, where it was able to maybe scour out some more material, and so the actual rivers can hold a little bit more water within their banks. But those are up and around View Drive area that we were, that was just seeing that. And we are expecting to, again, just to see the flood waters continue to rise and through tonight. And that is our main concern, is that we're going to have a peak around the midnight hours and overnight. And so hopefully, a lot of preparation and action has already been taken, and people are just monitoring the conditions and making sure that everything that they have is safe and along with their selves. And I guess with that, I'll keep it short and just see what type of questions you all may have for me and how I can answer those. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that update. It is greatly appreciated. Are there any questions from Assembly members? Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. What is the, are you guys tracking the cubic feet per second or the flow of it? Do you know what it is?
Yeah, so currently, the flow is right around 18,000 cubic feet per second right now.
Follow-up.
Yes.
And so, and so the max that we are advertising or we're forecasting is about 27,000 cubic feet per second. And to put it in perspective, last year was 25,000, roughly about 25,000 cubic feet.
And here's my follow-up question. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Are there further questions from Assembly members? Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Mr. Jacobs, where is, where is the, the gauge located?
The actual, USGS gauge is actually located on the lake itself, up along the Rockout Cropping. And since there is no real inflow downstream along the river, that is the best indicator that we have of the conditions in the river. Even though it's in the lake, it's the same type of water height and flow that the USGS measures.
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. On the rate of the rise of the river, are we expecting it to slow down or speed up or stay the same until it crests?
It will slowly increase, but right now, it's going to stay on that primarily, that curve that we're seeing right now, all the way up to the crest. So we shouldn't see a much increase or decrease unless, in the decrease side, there could be something that could plug it, and the event could be over. But it's hard, we cannot tell if that's the case. But currently, that slope should continue until it hits the peak.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Bryson.
Thank you for the second question. Has any damage started to occur? Have any banks started to give out? I wanted to say by this point last year, we had started to see some of the erosion. Have you witnessed anything on any of the banks yet?
No, actually, not yet. And we're still just below our previous record of 2016 of 12 feet. And we do start, we have in the past seen some erosion take place at these levels, but as my observations as of today, I haven't seen much of anything right now, but there are definitely some trees coming down. I was down around the underway earlier this afternoon, and definitely some trees and some erosions happening on the far side of the bank. But at this time, I haven't seen any other erosion that would be critical for any infrastructure.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Bryson. Are there further questions for Mr. Rogers? Thank you so much for your update, and thank you very much for all the work you're doing and providing us the updated time and crest height as well. So that was very good to get that as soon as we did. So thank you, thank you very much.
And just one comment on the erosion. We didn't see the, a lot of the erosion really take place till we dig it over the 12, 13, 14-feet level. So it's still to be seen of how the base stabilization, everything plays out with this. So then we should all be maintaining those, those areas and such. But we'll be continuing to monitor it all night long, and we'll be sending out updates when it crests. And then again, we'll be sending out another one later on in the morning on where the conditions happen and where impacts have taken place.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. I have been calling you the wrong name.
It's okay, I get it. It's been a long day.
You should have. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Very much appreciated.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. My, my, thank you. And Madam Manager, are we now going to hear from Director Koch?
Yes. Let's, I'm just going to get started with what I know and invite you, Denise, if there's any questions. We stood up a joint EOC this morning at 10:30 a.m., and we have regularly scheduled meetings this week, joint responses with ADOT, National Weather Service, Coast Guard, and Red Cross. And as mentioned, Director Koch is acting as instant command for this event. We issued a press release earlier today encouraging people to evacuate if they live west of Riverside Drive. Currently, CCFR is going door-to-door and further encouraging that evacuation. We have an email address that we are asking people to send questions to rather than make phone calls. This allows us to triage their questions because we won't know the answers to those questions, but we can triage them. And that's floodresponse@junau.gov. That's being manned right now by, I know Deputy Manager Barr and our incident commander. We have, of course, much earlier in the day evacuated campers that were at the Menon Hall Campground to the Derrick Kennedy Field. Floyd Dryden is the emergency shelter. We have both Red Cross volunteers and CBJ staff that are manning that as a shelter. That will be open at 8:00 p.m. this evening. Of course, as you can imagine, trails of the glacier have already been closed and will not be accessible through tomorrow evening. We do have, working with the city attorney, we have prepared a disaster declaration if it is necessary. Don't have a, don't know what the impacts will be yet, but we are, we are prepared with that. And so if it's necessary, that's something that I can declare, and then you can ratify on Wednesday at your special meeting. We did talk to ALMP. They are expecting some power outages. They will be caring for that proactively. Haven't, haven't cut any power yet, but View Drive will probably be where they cut power first, then Skeeter's Cabin, and then Meander Way. They're working with their PIO to make sure there's plenty of notice for, for residents with that, that that's something that they're able to care for a little bit more proactively this time around. Of course, we heard at PWFC at noon that we were able to get the backflow, not backflow prevention, I'm thinking, so we were getting the duck bills installed in the storm drains to prevent that backflow earlier in July. So that will be helpful for this event. And the Coast Guard will be flying the area in the morning to survey damage. One thing that happened in the last event is we had a lot of debris, including some hazardous materials. So those are my notes that I wanted to make sure to point out to you guys, and then I will hand it over to Director Koch for additional updates.
Thank you very much, Director Koch.
Thank you. City Manager Kester covered most of it. One thing I would add is that in these events, things are always evolving pretty quickly. So you probably don't even know this at this point, but we are planning on actually working with the State Emergency Operations Center to send, send out what they call a WEA alert. You know, everything has to have its own acronym. I don't know what WEA stands for, but, but I could tell you what it does. It's a text system. So the, the reason for this is if people, it's, it's to reach people who, you know, maybe don't read the news, or they aren't on social media, this will push to their phones. And what we'll do is we'll send a very short message that will link to a website, because you're very limited in the number of characters that you could send in this text message. Unfortunately, the text message, you know, there's not, you can't geofence it to just a narrow band around the river. So it will go out to all of Juneau. And so we, we haven't done this before. This will be, this will be new. But we thought it was important, especially given that with our partners at the National Weather Service, really, even this morning saying, you know, we, we could have another full release, and then we'll update you later in the day. And the update later in the day says, oh, it actually looks higher, and it's, the water's coming faster. So we're, of course, everyone's always hoping for the best, but really felt like we needed to be prepared for potentially a flood that will be at higher river stage than it was last year, which inundates additional parts of the valley. There, there's a website that the National Weather Service maintains. It's based on some of their models, and you can see what streets get inundated at different, different flood stages. But really, at, when you're getting close to 16 feet, and right now, I think their latest projection was, I think, 15.57 feet. They don't have those increments. They've got 15 feet, they've got 16 feet. They don't have all the increments in, in between on the map. But if you look at the 16 feet, really, a lot of the roads west of Riverside will see water, places that didn't see water last year. So we thought it was really important to get that, that message out. That will probably, I think, come within the next hour or two. As, and as, as City Manager Kester mentioned, of course, we do have Floyd Dryden that will open tonight at, at 8:00 p.m. We thought that we, even earlier in the day, we thought it was more likely than last year that some people might need sheltering. So our logistics folks, which are Parks and Rec team, will be, will be ready.
Madam Manager, thank you very much, Director Koch. Madam Manager.
I would just add that we're getting the lifeline from Robert, who's busy working, working on the angles, and we are going to be able to geofence that, that notice. So.
Wonderful.
New information for all of us, all the time. Communication is the biggest, the biggest challenge and opportunity in these events.
Thank you. Are there questions for Madam Manager or Director Koch? Madam Mayor?
Thank you. A couple of questions. At this time, we are asking people to evacuate, correct? And it's not mandatory. At what point will we be mandatory, if any point?
Correct. It is not a mandatory evacuation. We, we really don't, there are very rare circumstances where we would do a mandatory evacuation.
Thank you. And Mr. Jacobs, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on what WEA means, is Wireless Emergency Alert System. So it's something that was made up from the tornadoes, so we were able to geofence. So you, people in that area would get those alerts. So that's what WEA is, just for everyone's edification.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Mr. Bryson.
I'll try to form this in a question. I got a notification that Trillium Landing, the senior center, is looking, trying to evacuate, and they were looking for assistance. I don't know if that was relevant information to the EOC or not. I don't have any other information on that.
Director Koch.
Through, through the chair, Tom Matisse, our emergency manager, has been in contact with Trillium. The Trillium staff were at least several hours ago today reaching out to their residents, encouraging people to evacuate. Once again, wasn't mandatory. There was one resident who had some addition, who would have some challenges at Floyd Dryden. So we were trying to find if there, if there were other options for her. St. Vincent de Paul might have some options for her, but we were trying to care for that, or there's always just a hotel room.
Thank you. Are there further questions from the Assembly? Madam Mayor.
So if people are concerned about if they were flooded before and they're going to get flooded, so they're going to reach out to the floodresponse@junau.gov? Or are we going to have something different if something happens and people are facing flooding and how they can get help and that kind of stuff?
You mean after the, after the event?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and start that, and then maybe Denise can chime in. Last year, we were able to lean on the state for assistance because it was an emergency, the state issued an emergency disaster. We really don't know what this event will look like, if it will be limited to impacting a few homes, if it will be widespread, or if it will be considered an emergency by the state. So all of those factors will limit the resources that we have available. And, you know, with a, with a special meeting schedule on Wednesday, we can bring some of those questions to you. But certainly, now that we have this, this event almost like clockwork here on August 5, I think that there will be some questions, and it will really depend on the severity of the event. So I guess right now, we can't promise that we will have the same level of assistance available. But of course, the Assembly can always lean in and, and offer up additional resources.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Are there further questions? I just have one big kudos to staff for getting those duck bill backflow prevention flaps installed. That's just amazing, and that timing was really incredible. So I really appreciate that. Mr. Bryson.
Madam Hale, Madam Deputy Mayor, I actually appreciate you raising that concern because that, the duck bills or the backflow prevention devices was the number-one thing that we found on Public Works and Facilities. That was the, the action item that the city could do other than just funding, studying, and surveying. It was the Public Works and Facilities actually got that.
No, Mike, you're right.
That was the one city response that we, that physically we could do to prevent further damage. So I'd just like to thank Public Works and Facilities as well.
And I would like to thank Chair Bryson. Thank you. I see no further questions. Director Koch, you may have a long night, and I will too, since I live on Riverside. So thank you very much for being here. And Madam Manager, thank you. We will move on to Floyd. One comment I wanted to make for members here and members, people watching this meeting on Zoom. Other people, not us here on the dais necessarily, but other people are monitoring what's going on. And if it seems at some point during this meeting that we really need to cancel the meeting and, and go address what, what is happening, we will do that. So we're, we're paying, we got our finger on the pulse. So, so we'll move on to Floyd Dryden. Thank you, Director Koch. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Since Director Koch is on the hot seat, she has really spearheaded this project, trying to figure out what community uses was the best use for the schools that we've inherited. I just wanted to thank her. Public Works and Facilities Committee has done a tremendous amount of work on this topic to deliver you something that, that you can congeate on. I just want to start with the end in mind and keep, we are looking for some high-level direction from you tonight. I think you're going to find lots of questions that we will not be able to answer. So in lieu of getting frustrated with our inability to answer those questions, we're looking for two things. Direction from you on Klingut hideout leasing. Direction from you on Clinken and Haida leasing out Floyd Dryden. There's a couple of different scenarios that they've requested that will allow us to move forward with that particular facility. The second thing we're asking for direction from you on is to allow us to enter into conversations with the, the community uses as listed in the ranking form that Public Works and Facilities Committee did. That doesn't mean an end all be all for the space, but you'll find there's lots of things like conflicting uses with the diet and the diagrams that you see in your packet today, right? You're like, wait, does that use really fit with that use? And there's a lot of chicken and egg here. So we really feel like, much like when we asked you to give us some, you know, criteria to start the conversation, this is asking for your feedback to be able to continue that conversation. So with that, I will hand it over to Director Koch.
Thank you very much. And Director Koch.
Thank you very much. So this is, I think, in some ways, on this project, there are so many questions that we could go into. It really felt like we just needed to get started. So at PWFC, so the first thing that we did is we did the open call to the community to see who was interested in proposing on the different uses. That happened in May and closed in May. Then we went to Public Works and Facilities Committee and asked them what, for some of their feedback on ranking. I did that individually, in some ways used the legislative capital priorities as a model where people did individual ranking. And then at the June PWFC meeting, I brought the aggregate of the ranks. At that June meeting, there was some other discussion about, you know, who maybe some of these, we want to be able to express individually kind of a yes or no on whether we think a proposal is a good use for the space or not. And that's what you see after, what I brought back to PWFC on July 15. These tables where you have crossouts, I, I wanted to keep the items that were crossed out there and visible so you could see what was removed as, as a function of the PWFC's recommendations. Then what I asked PWFC for on July 15, they did agree to, they didn't make any changes based on their, you know, the aggregate of their individual responses. And then I wanted to go to the next step, which was do these really high level block diagrams of the, the space and emphasis on high level. I mean, this was really like the 30,000 foot level to help us start to, I'm a pretty visual person, I know other, many other people are as well, to really start to try and figure out what the schools would look like. As Ms. Kestner mentioned, the first two diagrams, we've got two diagrams for Floyd Dryden. And that, those vary based on how much space is given to Clinken and Haida. Clinken and Haida ranked very, very high on that initial ranking at PWFC, but they asked for one half to two thirds. They said they would take either. And so we, we did a little bit of that, that diagramming that out so you could see what really changes, what, what really changes on that version that's, you know, the two thirds version is that there's not space at Floyd Dryden for Family Promise of Juneau. That's the significant piece. You'll see on both of the Floyd Dryden diagrams that three and four, which is UAS and Ock Lake Preschool are the same color in blue because they came back to us after the July PWFC meeting and said that they, they'd like to collaborate on space and they could be sort of considered one space usage. So that's why they are the one, the one color. And then for Marie Drake, just wanted to mention, we know that parking is a challenge at Marie Drake. That is really like the number one challenge. So this doesn't take into account, you know, parking and what the parking needs are for the different proposals. It really is just place, visually placing them on the site layout of Marie Drake in with, and with a preference towards the order that PWFC told us was their preference. And I think one of the important points there is that JCOA is not, is not on that Marie Drake floor plan. And as Ms. Kestner mentioned, you know, what we're really looking for tonight is some sense from the fuller body, if the, if the ranking that PWFC had, had given to us, which we have been, we staff have been using as a guide, if that's something that the COW agrees with or not. That question of whether Floyd Dryden, you know, the body is interested in giving Clinken and Haida one half or the two thirds version of what they had requested. And of course, any other questions that you would like for us to pursue. And then at that point, we'll be able to delve more deeply into discussions with the proposal, the proposers on issues like compatible uses or how much parking they think they need or, you know, I actually, you know, I'd like this space instead of that space and doing some of that, that swap. So that's all to say, you know, back to my, we just wanted to get started. I knew it's not, it's not perfect, but it's just, just a guide to help people visualize what the preferred order would look like in the building.
Thank you, Director Koch. And before we start in with questions and thoughts, one, the Committee of the Whole is the place to bring things that aren't perfect yet, so we talk about them here. So thank you very much. And, you know, I think Director Koch has talked about finding out if the Committee of the Whole agrees with the ranking list. That's really important. Answering that question about Clinken Haida, one third or two thirds, one half or two thirds of Floyd Dryden. And then really trying to move forward on staff being able to negotiate with the, the people who have made proposals. And I only say that because there are many, many, many rabbit holes that we could all go down. And so I'm just hoping that we can keep it high level because we know this is coming back to us and there will be further opportunity, several times, yes, further opportunity to really uncover, take the lid off things. So that's my encouragement. Thank you. Ms. Atkinson, I see you have a question.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. This is question class clarification here. On the Marie Drake proposal here, we, even though it's one color and one group, I think we said in Public Works that the AYAC proposal, the offices and the childcare are sort of two different proposals. So could there be a world, for instance, where we rank the childcare pretty high, but we decide we don't necessarily want the offices there?
Director, good question. Thank you, Director.
Through the chair to Ms. Atkinson. Thank you for making that, that, that comment. You are correct and we did keep them the same color, but they're related, they're the same proposer, but they could be separated if, if necessary. And that's why even you'll see, we put the offices closer to our interim CBJ employee space. That's, so the second floor is more of a office space, whereas the first floor is where we had proposed to put the childcare facilities. But thank you for pointing that out.
And on that note, one thing that I found interesting was the idea of the, the carers program being associated or near childcare, but you're saying it would be offices, not children in those, that, on that second floor.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Smith, did I see your hand raised? No. Other questions and comments? Madam Mayor, do you have a question or comment?
A comment and perhaps a motion. So first of all, I want to thank, this was at Public Works, that you spent a lot of time on this, I listened to many of it. So I can say that I'm fairly happy with the ranking. I mean, you can't please everybody and I think you guys went through a pretty robust thing and I don't see anything that's worth arguing over whether it's two or three or something like that, to be quite honest. So I'll make this first simple motion that I think is not too hard to make. I would move that we direct staff to proceed with Clinken Haida using up to two thirds of Floyd Dryden and ask for unanimous consent.
Are there any objections? Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. I, I see the opportunity to use this area for quite a few other organizations. I prefer to maximize that. And so I was personally in favor of the one half option so we could give some other organizations also the opportunity to use the space. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Bryson.
I'm going to speak in favor of this motion. Childcare, childcare, childcare is one of the most critical components to us, not only growing our economy and securing our economy and addressing some of the workforce issues, but it also is a super important factor for the Coast Guard icebreaker because we have not had enough childcare. It's at a crisis level. And so to use a school facility for childcare seems like the absolute most appropriate use for that facility with the least amount of renovations required in there. And while I do appreciate that there are other organizations that do have needs, childcare touches every single aspect of our economy, which is why it ranked so highly to go into schools. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. We have Madam Mayor and then Mr. Kelly. And then Ms. Hughes-Scandies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm agreeing with Mr. Bryson and Clinken Haida is trying to do this to centralize all their childcare so they're trying to become more efficient. And just to plug out there, I'm reminding everybody that Head Start, even though it's run by Clinken Haida, is open to non-native kids as well as native children. And also they are trying to wrap some elder care, as I remember in their proposal too, but they hadn't quite thought about that. So that's why I've given the option of trying to figure that out and remember I said up to two thirds. So if they don't want quite that much, they can make that decision.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Kelly and then Ms. Hughes-Scandies.
Thank you. I would agree that childcare is a major priority of this Assembly and that's why I ranked it so high myself on the, when I was on the Committee. However, I also think that homelessness, for example, is another major issue of importance that this Assembly is trying to address. And I think Family Promise does excellent work in that regard. And I would like to leave a little bit of space open for them to be included in this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hughes-Scandies.
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pardon me, you guys. I thank Mr. Kelly for his objection, thank Madam Mayor for the, just so we can have the discussion because we haven't gotten into this part of it yet. We needed the whole body to do that. I do say that personally, this is not a make it or break it. I'm always happy to be a good partner with the tribe and I think it'll be great and efficient if they're using two thirds. But I also was interested in the, seeing if there's a space that we can squeak out for Family Promise when we talk about using schools for children as a natural use. Similarly, Family Promise is for families and for children who are experiencing homelessness, that's really who they serve is those who are homeless with kids. So I know that's, that's our job, right? Five conflicting priorities and they're all the most prior, the most important. So I just wanted to have that in the mix, especially because after Grants Press and, and everything else that we've been talking about, a lot of times there's not a lot we can do for homelessness. It's like this very impossible thing to get your arms around. And so anything where we can say, yeah, you can use our space is like an easy way to do that. So I am leaning a bit, you know, 51 of the half and 49 of the two thirds. So I just wanted to put that on the record and get your guys' thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes-Scandies. Are there further comments or questions? Mr. Bryson. And then Mr. Smith.
Only to help finalize Ms. Hughes-Scandies' thought here. Thank you. So while agreed, we all have great points, nobody's been inaccurate here. One of the options is allowing an initial, let's say Clinken and Haida in the initial discussion. Part of what we discussed is that once we had, we kind of had a sense of how we'd be able to house somebody, they could then go into the discussion, how could they jointly use space? So if the city tries to say, we can put these two facilities next to each other, it's not going to be a productive conversation. But if we get Clinken and Haida set up with the space they need so that they're caring for childcare, one, we're moving the economy forward, but two, we would then be able to have that conversation. Clinken Haida is using this, how would they feel about having Family Promise? And how would it work in conjunction with Clinken and Haida being a primary facilitator user? Getting Clinken Haida started is the right step and then we can bring the other smaller use entities on. What can we do for shared space? And so that can absolutely be part of the, the conversation. No other facility though, or no other need, that's not fair to say, childcare just ranks very high in lots of aspects. That's why we want to get them started.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Mr. Smith and then Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think I'm equally kind of split here in that, and I don't actually, I was going to ask about, oh, the level of detail and if they had two thirds, would they, you know, would they be losing efficiency by not grouping certain programs together? But that might be a little deep in the weeds.
It might be.
So, I mean, you know, maybe my kind of thought would be, we can speak with Clinken and Haida, you know, I'm okay with the mayor's motion, but just knowing that, trying to, I, I've known, I believe Family Promise has bounced around to a couple of different spots in the past. And I think, I know them finding space is a challenge with, you know, being a nonprofit serving. Anyway, so maybe speak with Clinken Haida and then, but trying to keep Family Promise in mind and see what works out.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I just want to keep it really high level too. The mayor said up to two thirds. I think that giving this direction allows staff the flexibility to do, if Clinken Haida really does need two thirds to make it efficient, then I think staff will make that best choice and bring it back to us. But if they can make it work with one half and fit Family Promise, then that's the kind of negotiations we're giving them permission to do now. So I think I'm in complete support of the mayor's motion.
Mr. Kelly, and then I actually have comments as well and I'm trying to be a really good chair and I haven't brought them up yet, but yes.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Hale. And actually, I, I wanted to raise a question for staff. So in, in the models that we're, that we're doing, for example, for having Clinken and Haida as two thirds, would there be adequate space for what Family Promise is requesting?
Director Koch. Sorry. Through the chair to Mr. Kelly. No, if we, going by the ranking that we've received and that, we're looking at that as guidance from PWFC, we would not, and if, in an instance where Clinken and Haida has two thirds, and also part of the reason is that, you know, UAS and Ock Lake Preschool, they were also planning on doing daycare and they ranked higher than Family Promise, which is why they got the remainder of the space. That would not leave space for Family Promise of Juneau if Clinken and Haida indeed wants all two thirds. Yes.
Thank you. I was thinking more along the lines of if we exercised our discretion, because if we did Clinken and Haida, they'd be doing two thirds and that would be childcare and meeting that need. So if we did use our discretion and skip past items three and four, would we have enough room for Family Promise in that case for, if we gave Clinken and Haida the two thirds? Thank you.
Director Koch. Through the chair to Mr. Kelly. I think we would be, we could probably fit Family Promise in that scenario, but that is part of the, the question that, or the area where we're looking for guidance from the Assembly on whether you agree with that ranking that PWFC had initially given to us. And that we use that in, as a preferential order for how we placed different organizations in the space. But we could, we could change, if the body wants to change the ranking, we'll, we'll make those, those changes to the visuals.
Thank you, Director Koch. Are there further questions or comments from Assembly members? I'll, I'll just comment. A couple of thoughts that I have, I know that childcare has extremely strict rules around what can be what and who can be co-located with them. And I think it would be around what can be what and who can be co-located with them, and I think it would be, probably this would come out, you know, this would be part of the back and forth with the different people that are making applications. But I think it would be really important for us to be sure that if Family Promise did get into the mix, that that would be compatible with the childcare that Clinkin-Haida provides, as well as the Oak Bay and the UAS program. I favor, I'm a big supporter of Family Promise, and I donate to them, but I favor the model with two-thirds and the UAS, Oak Bay preschool model as well. It's using the facility for very similar things. UAS is training people in childcare. Clinkin-Haida is doing the same thing, so there's great potential for crossover and great potential for crossover of programs. I, even though, again, I support Family Promise, I think that it's not quite in that same camp as the programs that we have listed in the two-thirds model. So are there further questions or comments, or shall we take a vote? Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So for the motion to direct staff to proceed with Clinkin-Haida using up to two-thirds of the Floyd Dryden, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes-Scandies?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? And Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
How about, Madam?
I'm sorry, Madam Hale.
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Further conversation or another motion? Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I would move that we direct staff to also enter into discussions with Family Promise and Clinkin-Haida to see if they would be willing to work together for the remaining one-third of Floyd Dryden and ask for unanimous consent.
Are there any objections? Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think that we just talked about liking the rankings the way they are, and I think I'm not interested in replacing UAS or Oak Lake Preschool with Family Promise. We've ranked it that way because childcare together makes a lot of sense, and that's very important. And while I do appreciate the work Family Promise does, I don't think this is the time to be shifting things around like that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We just passed a motion that says up to two-thirds, so it seems silly to do another motion that says, "No, we're not going to do up to two-thirds," so I disagree with that motion. I object.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there further objections? Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I'm not saying that we don't do two-thirds for Clinkin-Haida. I'm saying that we have, we're not using the full amount of Floyd Dryden. I'm saying we possibly use the rest for Family Promise if they both feel like they're compatible with each other.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I didn't understand your motion before, but I still object to this. I would like to stay with our rankings that public works, works so hard to do, and like I said before, I don't see there's any, I don't have any further disagreement. And just so you know, I, like Ms. Hale, support Family Promise greatly. I donate to them. I was at their picnic on Saturday, but I just think that this is a great place for childcare, to be all in one building, and I think you'll have quite a lot of synergy on that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also object, just for the record. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you for the motion to enter into discussion to see if Clinkin-Haida and Family Promise would work together on the remaining portion. Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Atkinson?
No.
Ms. Hughes-Scandies?
No.
Mr. Bryson?
No.
Ms. Hale?
No.
And Mayor Weldon?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Moving on, we have additional questions that we need to be answering, authorizing staff. Do we either have comments or a motion? Did I see your agenda, Mr. Smith? Yes?
I was going to just try a motion on the second action. If, I mean, we've kind of discussed it, but we haven't really probably done it. So I'll just go.
Glad you could do that, and that'll be good.
I move that we authorize staff to negotiate with the proposers on space needs per the ranking and ask for unanimous consent.
Are there any objections to that motion? Seeing no objections, you have your direction. Thank you. I believe we've probably covered the questions. Director Koch, are there other questions that you need us to give you direction on, or have we brought this to the point where you can go mess around and bring it back?
You have given me guidance. I appreciate that, and we've always known this would be an iterative process, and we'll start those discussions with Clinkin-Haida, and then we'll be back.
Thank you very much, Director Koch, and yes, you have a long night ahead of you. Thank you. We will, do you guys want like a five-minute break? Let's take a five-minute break. So we'll be back at 7:05. We bring the Assembly Committee of the whole meeting back to order at 7:10 PM. Our next topic on the agenda is Telephone Hill Place Guide and Zero Parking. Madam Manager, did I get that right?
I think so. I think of it as Telephone Hill Next Steps, which isn't particularly illustrative of what we're talking about. So I think Telephone Hill Place Guide and Parking are, it's a great title for this topic.
Thank you.
So on page 16 of your packet, you have a memo, and I'm not going to read you this memo, but I am going to walk you through it because it's organized in the stages that I'm requesting your feedback in. And I do want to note that we have project manager Nick Dreivstein in the audience and land manager Dan Blydon, and so they will likely be called up here to answer questions. The first item that we're looking for direction on is to expand the no parking area to include Telephone Hill. And so we'd really like, we got direction from you at a previous COW, I believe it was in, anyway, I'm not going to try to remember, April 15th, it was April 15th, to expand the no parking zone. But this request is really to introduce an ordinance to expand that no parking zone. You've, you had some deliberation about it, asked for more questions about no parking, and so at the Lands Housing and Economic Development Committee, their last meeting last month, we give a presentation that just touched on parking and why the recommendation was to expand that no parking zone. And just to recap, it adds a lot of expense to the project, and we want to incentivize affordability in this project. So any expense that we add reduces, either reduces the ability to do affordability or increases the subsidy required or the CBJ skin in the game. It adds over $8 million to the project to do parking. Also, there's a parking garage right on that property that could be expanded up to three stories. There's, you know, the parking in downtown in general, the landscape could change if City Hall moves out of downtown core. So it's a very walkable neighborhood, a lot of really good pedestrian access, and, you know, likely would have some of our more transient workforce there, legislature, people like that housed there. So those are all the reasons why we recommended no parking. So we would like to get you to introduce, go ahead and make a motion to introduce that ordinance so we can keep continuing that conversation. So I will pause there before I move on to item number two.
Madam Manager, are you kind of thinking about us walking through these one by one with motions?
I think that would be a very organized way to do it.
Super. Are there questions or comments before we have a motion? Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I apologize I didn't come to this question with you beforehand. It's just something that I've thought of recently. If we did expand the no parking area to the space and we were to develop housing in this area, if somebody were to purchase an apartment, or, I'm sorry, rent an apartment or acquire an apartment in this area who had ADA needs, would they have, is there any sort of designated handicap parking that they would be able to use, or would there be some way for them to accommodate such a tenant?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Good question, Madam Manager.
We do have designated ADA spaces in the downtown parking garage, so that would be one solution. Your question is, do we have to mandate by code that a developer include ADA parking spaces? I don't have the answer to that, but I certainly will ask Director Lawhorn for some feedback on that. I suspect there's some minimum parking. I don't know if that, I don't really answer that question. But I did have another thought that's escaping me. You, oh, I do think there will be some parking in this development regardless of what we mandate, just because there will be some very high-end condos, in addition, it's a mixed development is how we're moving forward, and so a high-end condo will probably need a parking spot. That does not answer your question about ADA because it's not necessarily a high-end user that would have that. So I'm happy to come back to you with an answer to the ADA question specifically.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Are there further comments or questions before we have a motion? Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I think I would be fine going ahead and introducing a, introducing an ordinance, but I think we should go into this with our eyes wide open, and I'd be interested to know if there already has been some sort of study on how this development would affect parking, or if we can ask for at least some numbers before we, you know, vote on this on the Assembly level.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Madam Mayor?
Are you ready for your motion?
Yeah, I am.
So I moved to introduce an ordinance to expand the no parking required area to include Telephone Hill as depicted in attachment A and ask for unanimous consent.
Are there objections? I will object for purposes of a comment, and then I'll remove my objection. Similar to what Mr. Kelly said about sort of understanding the ramifications, I have spoken with Madam Manager, and if CBJ does move out of downtown, that frees up, I believe, more than 100 parking spaces in the various parking garages. Is that correct, Madam Manager?
You're correct. There are 165 downtown, year-round downtown employees. Now, whether it frees up all of them or not, will work out in the wash, like seasonal employees, stocks and harbors seasonal employees may still have parking passes here, but that's the number of year-round parking passes issued.
Thank you, and I think, you know, as Mr. Kelly said, we were in an early stage here, but we're actually trying to move it along, and I'm totally for moving it along. I do think it's important that we not just add buildings or add units to a downtown that is already really squeezed for parking, and so it's, I won't even say the B-U-S word, but it's important that we, we understand what we're doing here. I will remove my objection. Are there any objections to the Madam Mayor's motion? No objections. We will move on. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. I will just note that I do have a friend listening in, and if parking is not required, then we cannot require ADA spaces. So that can answer that question.
Oh, thank you.
And maybe Assembly Member Kelly, you can work with me offline about what, the specificity that you require for numbers and what that means, so just to put a plug in for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. All right. The next item is, how much affordability does the Assembly want to include in the project? Recognizing this may mean implementing a number of different strategies, tax abatement, site development, land transfer. We don't really know what strategies might be needed, but you know, if the Assembly wants something and wants to mandate something as part of the development, we can expect to have to pay for a part of that one way or another. And you recall, a couple of cows ago, this body struggled with that question, referred it to the Land Housing and Economic Development Committee. There's a link to that presentation from last month's L-HED committee. We talked a lot about the 20% of the development being 80% AMI is what the Federal Housing Fund guidelines uses. We talked a lot about the demand for workforce housing in Juneau. This development will not meet the demand. I believe the latest kind of parking, I'm sorry, parking, the latest housing assessment was 377 units, but it does, 20% of 155-unit development does help with that. So the recommendation for, from L-HED was to include the 20% of units, be 80% AMI, and that metric helps us move forward as we create a request for information from developers.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Madam Mayor?
So when we talk about 20% of the units, are we talking about 20% of the whole development, or can the 20% be all in one structure? How does that look to us?
Madam Manager, good question.
Yeah, I think that for our purposes, 20% of 155 would be the guidance that we give developers. So, you know, this is really hard because I think I've just keep bringing chicken and egg topics to you at the Committee of the Whole, but as Deputy Mayor Hale pointed out, this is the place to talk about messy things, and we don't really know exactly how a developer would propose to use it. We just want to make sure that we put in that request for information, what the Assembly feels like is, you know, essential. Like, it has to include affordability, period, hard stop. Now what that affordability looks like beyond 20% of the units being, meeting the 80% AMI target will be up to those respondents.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Ms. Atkinson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. When we say a target of 20% affordability, of 80% affordability, I'm assuming that's just what the Assembly wants, and it's not locking in developers into, "If you don't have this, don't bother coming to us." What's the proposal is, how's that work?
Madam Manager?
Thank you. Really, it's guidance for developers because we're not issuing, we're not issuing a bid. So we're not saying, here's the exact things that we want to see, and we're going to score it based on this criteria, and then you're going to, you know, get it or not. So I suspect you will see all types of different colors and flavors, much like the Floyd Dryden Marie Drake proposed uses for Corral. We started that with a request for information, and part of that's to get that conversation going. So, I mean, our guidance will be the Assembly needs to see 20% of these units at 80% AMI. That is clear direction that they've given. If someone responds and says, "I can't do that. It's not affordable. Here's my proposal," certainly we would share that with you for your information, and you know, that's going to be part of the story.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Ms. Hughes-Scandies, and then Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify or verify my own understanding. So to this point, we discussed the affordability requirements here, and then we sent it back to the lands, and we passed the 20% at 80% out of lands. We still, at this point, have not had any discussion about the rest of the 80%, correct? Because I hear, there's, it was in the minutes of something else, and then you just made reference to it just now. But I'm hearing like comments for like very high-end condos, and I don't think there's been a discussion of that for the very reason that you just yourself said, we're leaving, we have to leave this kind of open-ended because it's messy, and we just, we have to wait and see what they bring to us. But is your understanding at this point, beyond that 20% must be affordable, we haven't given any direction on the other 80%, correct?
Madam Manager?
Correct, and that was part of the conversation when we had the last Committee of the Whole. If, you know, if 80% AMI was the right target, I will say, in the market study, that's part of the placemaking guide and part of their fiscal analysis, they assume, they being first 40 feet who we've been working with, they assume that a portion of these condos will be high-end, and that's part of how they got to their recommendation on affordability, just assuming that those, that would offset some of the other costs.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Follow-up, Ms. Hughes-Scandies?
Yeah, just a quick one on that, because I have a bunch of different, I appreciate all the linking in the two, we've been looking at this for a while now, and we've done a fair bit of studying it from different angles. The market study that is part of the place guide, which we've already gotten to see at lands, against what we had Leland consultant, our Leland group, I guess, just market analysis, period. I'm curious if those were on separate tracks, or if, and maybe that's a Mr. Blydon question or a Mr. Dreivstein question that I should have asked ahead of time, but when, for first 40 feet to do that place guide, which I guess I'm jumping the gun, sorry, I'll hold that question until we get to the second piece because it's not about, it is and isn't about affordability. is and isn't about affordability. retract the question.
Okay.
Forgot to hear.
That, that until we get to the place guide. I, I don't know when you're going to hold it to.
Okay, I guess then my question is, chronologically, the market analysis that we had the Leland group do has some different numbers in the market analysis section than the conclusions that the First Forty Feet place guide reached. So did we have that done, and they, First Forty Feet incorporated that as part of their own analysis? Or how did those two things come up with different, I guess, analysis?
I believe that First Forty used the guidance from the Assembly, uh, in, in making the final draft, but I will invite Nick up, uh, if he has any further detail on the iterations of First Forty's work.
Mr. Dravistine, you are a phone friend.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, so the market analysis was the first step before the feasibility analysis, but, um, a lot of the, um, sort of conflicting numbers that you could see in there was just the fact that it took about six months to put it all together, and, um, you know, the, the market just kind of shifts, and they, they're constantly updating their numbers as a part of that. But it's also, um, sort of a difference between, uh, numbers that they got based off of precedence, numbers that they got heard from developers on what it actually costs, and forecasting for a future market.
Thank you, Mr. Dravistine. Thank you for the question, Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thanks.
Um, Madam Mayor, I think you have a question.
Uh, this might actually be for the attorney. If we sell the land to someone, can we dictate that they have to build something in a certain amount of years, so they can't sit on a piece of property downtown when we want housing?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Attorney.
Uh, short answer, yes. Obviously, it's a little nuanced as to whatever you and the builder, developer, buyer agree to, and that's probably going to be dictated based on financing terms, but short answer, yes.
Thank you. Um, are there further questions about the affordability component? Uh, Ms. Uscandies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be just really brief that, just to the Assembly, that I hope that we continue talking about the affordability. I'm fine with where we're landing now, but I hope that the Assembly will continue to consider what that other 80% piece is.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Uscandies. And perhaps before we have a motion, I will also make a comment. One, I think as we go through this process, we know with the Affordable Housing Fund, it's hard to figure out how to require an affordable housing component. Um, and I think that's been borne out nationwide as people try to figure out how to build affordable housing. Two, uh, I, I, I understand what your questions are, but I also very much support mixed, a, a, a real mixed range of incomes that, that live here. I think that's something that we don't get a lot in our society, and I think it's good for our society. Um, Madam Mayor, do you have a motion for us?
I've got a question for you.
Question.
I can ask my question first.
Yes.
So just to be completely clear, Madam Manager, because this is the one I struggle with, it's prime property, you should get a prime price, but you have to weigh that against affordability. So if we put something out there for affordability, but someone says, I want to build 30 prime condos, we would still bring that to the Assembly to look at, correct?
Correct. We would not withhold any information from you, but we will, in our messaging, be like, this is what the Assembly wants to see.
Okay, so at this time, I'll make a motion. I would move to approve a target of 20% units at 80% affordability as part of the Telephone Hill redevelopment guidelines. Um, I hope we're doing the right thing. I'm going to speak to my motion, if you will.
Yes, please.
Um, part, part of me wants to do, just let free market reign on this particular piece of property. It's a prime piece of property. This is my struggle, so I may object to my own motion. I may attack myself with objection. Um, but the other part, and then, so to, just so you know, the other half I would put with that was, we have Second and Franklin. And so if we get every bit of dollar we can at this property, then we could put Second and Franklin, and we could perhaps make it 100% affordability or something. So that's what I'm struggling with. So at this time, I will move my motion, but it's a tough one for me.
Uh, thank you. Are there any objections to that motion? I will object for purposes of a statement, uh, and it is about that 80% AMI, having 20% of the units at 80% AMI. I think, uh, the future Assembly probably should be thinking about the fact that the Assembly may have to subsidize those units, because if the Assembly doesn't subsidize the units, the other people in the building are subsidizing the units. That's how it works. Um, and that's why it's so hard to get affordable housing. Mr. Bryson. And I remove my objection. Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, because I have been struggling, uh, the very same thing that Madam Mayor is, by introducing the 20% mandate, well, if we make it mandatory.
To target.
The target. So here's, here's how we could, here's how we could impact things. We could prevent the very highest end from being as high-end as it could be, because if a property owner who's like, going to have some of the best views in all of Southeast Alaska, wants to build expensive condos, that's going to go for a different price than if a person wants to build same space area, but rent apartments. If we restrict and we prevent people from being able to build condos at that, we will literally be shortchanging, uh, property tax indefinitely because of what, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Because lowering what a potential project could be by forcing that in there, giving the manager a little bit of flexibility, so that maybe one project has 50% of the building is at that, uh, 80% AMI. If we allow Madam Manager to have as much flexibility, we will prevent any of those negative situations from happening. And so if somebody has a, a process of a very expensive condo that we want somebody to buy, Madam Manager having more flexibility gives every single one of those as a possibility. So I'm going to remove my objection, go along with this, and I hope that, uh, Manager Kestner has as much flexibility so that we maximize this, so that not only the, the 80% folks have a place to live, but we're maximizing the value of that space, because it's not just the ground, it's the space above the ground.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Uscandies.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I will just throw into the conversation, the state expects this trend of outmigration to increase in the coming decades with a 2050 projected population of 28,692 individuals. Uh, and I bring that, I quote that from one of the things linked in our packet, just to also point out that it's, although I do care about this property being someplace that's affordable for a mix of the different incomes, it is also because it is incumbent on us to make sure that we're creating a housing situation where we are bringing people to town, and people are not leaving town because they can't afford the housing. So I will just put that again in all of our heads, that that's another piece of this, whether it's, it's just another piece of the puzzle, and it hasn't been said tonight, so.
Thank you, Ms. Uscandies. That was good. Uh, Mr. Kelly, and I guess, I, we had a motion, so are people objecting for a purpose of a statement or question? Mr. Kelly?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I'm just objecting for the purposes of a statement, and I'll remove my objection. I think why I could easily vote in favor of this is because precisely we are not, it's my understanding from the conversation we've had and from the dialogue we've had with Madam Manager, that we are not actually restricting, this is a recommendation, those ideas that don't conform to what we're asking for will still be brought for us. And so we can make our initial ask and say, this is what we want. We want to make sure that we have some affordability. But if somebody comes to us with a creative idea, creative solution, and that solution could lead to more affordable housing than even this idea, um, I don't think that Madam Mayor's motion restricts us from accepting that. So I, with that, I remove my objection.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Um, are there any objections to Madam Mayor's motion? Uh, I think we will move on. Uh, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I kept Mr. Dravistine up here because he is our expert on the place guide. The next item in the memo is requesting, uh, feedback on the draft Telephone Hill place guide. And this is, it, it's quite the document, and, and this will really, uh, serve as the compass for the request for information, and it is the culmination of about a year of work, all the linked attachments in there. Um, not perfect, but, uh, really gives a developer something to sink their teeth into, right? We're not just like, hey, you, you want to build some stuff out there? There's been a lot of thought, uh, by this body especially, in, uh, what you want, and, um, I'll hand it over to, uh, Mr. Dravistine for questions.
Um, thank you. Are there questions about the place guide for Mr. Dravistine? I have, uh, I have one comment, um, but first, I wanted to thank Lands Housing and Economic Development Committee for their work on that 20%, and for the question that, that sort of prompted that work. It was a really, it was a very, um, precise question, and I appreciate that, so thank you. But, um, Mr. Dravistine, I'm looking at page 63 of the packet, which is page 45 of the place guide, and it's opportunities, it's opportunities for active ground floor uses, opportunities for art murals, public seating benches. Um, I've said repeatedly, in fact, just about every time I've talked about this, uh, that it's, it's an ideal opportunity, um, if we're going to be putting buildings up on Telephone Hill, people like to be outside when they can, I, I understand it rains, um, it's an ideal opportunity for, uh, putting a little covered area, even fenced in, so it's only to be used for one, uh, each building. Um, and right now, I don't see that in the place guide, aside from what's in the opportunities page there. Do you have thoughts for me? I, I might make an amendment if we can't figure out how to get this in there. It's just, I hate to waste that opportunity, our, our opportunity with Telephone Hill.
Right. Well, um, as far as, um, sort of recreation area and parks, um, and, you know, accessibility like sidewalks and staircases, uh, all of those were considered, and we definitely heard a lot of, um, uh, favorable talk of that, um, from the community. But we sort of stopped short of actually prescribing anything in the place guide for that, um, partly because, you know, it's just a, a guide to show this sort of opportunities that present themselves there. Um, but also what we wanted to do is sort of highlight the parcels that could be built on top of it, uh, for residential use, uh, but also sort of highlight the other areas that, uh, couldn't, uh, couldn't have a building put there necessarily, maybe not enough space, maybe too steep of a grade, um, but it would also, um, it would just provide that space as an opportunity to put things like benches or, or covered areas, or, you know, an extension of, uh, the Telephone Hill Park that's already up there. Um, so that's sort of what that section is about, the, uh, the recommendation with the opportunities section.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, before we circle back to this, are there the comments or questions? Uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Uscandies, I just looked at you. I thought you read my mind. Sorry. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, your question prompts a question, which is, the, am I correct to say that the place guide really is about the opportunity and is not prescriptive, this, now that we've chosen an affordability target, that's prescriptive? But beyond that, it's just sort of a brochure to say, you could build here. What would you build here? Is that true?
Yeah.
Mr. Dravistine?
Uh, that, that's, uh, that's pretty much what it is. Um, it, um, you know, it, it provides us a guide, uh, to start talking to developers to really figure out what's possible, um, and, you know, what, um, what kind of blows a budget on it.
And then, could I ask?
Yes, please.
That was just a follow-up of yours. Um, my question is related to page 28 of the place guides, I was trying to search it I definitely don't want to give the impression that I'm saying skyscraper to the clouds, but, but it does have the benefit zoning-wise, I believe, of having, there is not height restrictions. So the way that we speak of that, my leading question about it not being prescriptive, we do mention a 65-foot height limit through the site. So is, do you see, I guess, not sure exactly what my question is, except I have a hard time, I'm searching for those things that will hem us in a little too much, um, and what might be missing from this place guide. And the height limitation was the only thing that I, do you, could you speak to the value of having that in there? Is it just to reflect that public process and what we heard from those residents?
Mr. Dravistine, thank you.
Yes, that is correct. Um, the 65-foot height limit, uh, as shown right there, um, really just has to do with perfecting, uh, protecting view sheds, uh, and not constructing a, a, a big building on tel, on already a, a hill in downtown, um, and just drawing unnecessary attention to the hill.
Okay, thanks. I think I'm just wrestling with that.
Madam Mayor.
But again, I think I see where Ms. Hughes Candies is going with this, but again, if it turns out that we can get more affordability in a taller building, can someone come up with a proposal that's over 65 feet that we can consider and decide then whether we stick to 65 or allow two extra floors? Because I believe 65, if I remember right, is about six floors.
Mr. Dravistine?
Yes, that is correct. Again, we'll bring all the options to you, but, um, something else to point out is, um, going up to 65 requires, uh, steel structure, which could be more expensive, but, um, we'll consider all, uh, all proposals.
Thank you. Are there further comments or questions on the draft Telephone Hill place guide? Is there a motion?
Uh-oh, that we need a motion.
I guess we don't need a motion.
You can provide the feedback.
We did provide feedback. I, I am going to provide feedback in a, in a formal sense, which is, I am going to move that, um, either attach the place guide or modify in the place guide, there is, uh, some form of outdoor space that is sort of allocated to each building. I, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm on the Assembly now, and in two months, I will not be on the Assembly. And boy, would I ever hate to go up to Telephone Hill, or would I hate to have friends that live there and say, my grandkids come over to visit, and there is no place for me to send them, aside from South Franklin Street, for example. So I, that's my, my motion. Uh, Madam Mayor.
For purposes of a question and a statement, they have Capital Park. We just cut the ribbon on. Um, so my question would be, do we already have something like that in our planning commission? If they build a building, they have to have so much green space.
I, I don't have an answer to that, but again, uh, I know Director Lawhorn is on, so we'll give her a couple of minutes, and maybe, maybe you have an answer. I guess what I heard, uh, Mr. Dravistine say is, the opportunities are for unbuildable land. So it might be helpful for us as we look to give guidance to developers. If you're, if the, the body's willing to sacrifice otherwise buildable space, that would be more, mean more units for open space, or if the objective is to really find ways to, uh, you know, creatively, um, incorporate this outdoor space in property that's not, not otherwise easily buildable. So that would be just helpful for us as you give, uh, guidance.
Thank, thank you, and I'm going to take that, because this is kind of on my topic here. I'm just looking at, uh, page, uh, 62 of the packet, page 44 of the place guide, and it shows various tree canopies around each building. I am not looking for anything complicated, but what I am looking for is that you, you don't send the grandkids out into, uh, salmon berry patch and get all scratched up. Um, and, and also you could go sit and drink coffee with your neighbors. So it's very simple, um, and I, I'm just going to interrupt very briefly. Uh, my family member has just told me that the new alert gives much more info with links, so I wanted to pass that on to staff. I'm sorry for that interruption. Okay, um, so that's my motion. Are, are we good with the motion? And, and, uh, Ms. Uscandies?
The, thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I appreciate the clarifying comments, and I very much appreciate, uh, Managers' comments in terms of what's useful and and I very much appreciate managers' comments in terms of what's useful and what's not. Because I think what I've struggled with, with the place guide all along is staff needs something that's, you need some kind of direction that you can go back and look at when we're not around. And then, we want to say, we want all our options and bring it all to me and let me choose, which doesn't really work. I think what, for me, when it comes down to buildable space, more units versus, you know, a park, say, or more outdoor space, I would prefer to maximize building on all this space. And I am confident, I really completely agree. I hope we don't mess up this great opportunity. I hope that I don't go up there and we screwed it up, and I hate what it is. But I, I have faith that, based on what's being referenced here, that I would, I would vote towards maximizing our buildability. So, like, I, I would, I guess I would object to that motion.
Okay. We have an objection. Madam Mayor.
A point of order.
Yes.
Madam Deputy Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I, I forgot my, my place. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that the place guide be updated so that there is some form of area outside for each building. It does not have to be on the buildable land. It just has to be designated for each building. It can be enclosed, it can have a roof or not, for residents of those buildings to enjoy the outdoors near their home. And that is my motion.
Any objection? Ms. Hughes-Candies, do you maintain your objection?
I'm looking at staff and looking at Mr. Drivesstein, because it's, it's hard to say, you know, I've had this and I've been cozying up with it, knowing that this is what they're going to use. So, as you just phrased it, sounds fine. You said, "Don't minimize buildable space." But-
Do you want to ask Mr. Drivesstein that?
Yes.
Fine.
Thank you.
Is that workable, Mr. Drivesstein? I think, oh, I'm sorry. Madam Chair.
We are out of sorts.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And Madam Manager, did we hear back from Ms. Lawhorn?
Did. There's no open space requirement in mixed use.
I was actually looking if there was a green space requirement, but-
So, no vegetation cover requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I will maintain my objection, but I very much understand where you're coming from, Ms. Hale.
All right. Adkinsen, did you have your hand raised? Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. Not an objection, actually a parliamentary inquiry. I know it's standard practice for us to pass the gavel when the chair makes the motion, but a question for the attorney. Is it actually required?
Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
You learn something every day. All right. So, we have objection, we have a motion with objection. Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And for Ms. Hale's motion, Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes-Candies?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Adkinsen?
No.
Mayor Weldon?
Yes.
Motion carries five yays, two nays.
Okay. Passing the gavel back to Madam Deputy Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was very helpful, and I apologize for my roughness. I think the last thing, moving on. Madam Manager?
We just have a note in the memo on the construction schedule, because we've heard a lot of testimony from residents. They want to have some certainty. And when they absolutely have to move out, we are encouraging people to move out and find alternative housing as soon as possible. We're not actively, you know, going in and doing major maintenance on these properties. You know, I think the earliest we could do anything would be next summer, which talks about, I, I find that to be fairly unlikely. I also hope it doesn't take up to three years, which is the other end of the spectrum on that. So, just trying to give the, the listening and very engaged public, they know what we know now.
Thank you. And then, do you have a request for the assembly then?
Yes. So, the last request is to direct us to issue a request for information for redevelopment of Telephone Hill based on the draft Telephone Hill Place Guide.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I move to direct staff to issue a request for information for redevelopment of Telephone Hill based on draft Telephone Hill Place Guide and ask for an honest consent.
Objection.
Ms. Hughes-Candies?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this would be the right place to, I don't think it needs to be an amendment, but maybe it's enough to verbally say, "Can we make sure that when we issue this request for information that it is distributed nationally? Or we go bigger than outside of our normal developer pool?" Would be my request. And I remove my objection.
I, I see a nod from Madam Manager. Yes. Okay. Thank you. Are there further objections? Seeing no objections, that passes, and we are done with the Telephone Hill topic, as I understand it for tonight. Is that correct, Madam Manager? I'd like, before we move on to downtown office space, to take another break, if that's all right with everyone. And we can make it short, about five minutes. So, maybe be back here at 7:55. Thank you. We have the whole meeting back to order at 8:00 PM during the break. We have lost Mr. Bryson, so we will note that in the minutes. And Madam Clerk, I believe we are moving on to downtown office space. I've also asked, I mean, not Madam Clerk, Madam Manager, I've also asked Madam Manager if she has an update on what's going on with the river to let us know, because at any point, we can always call the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hale. I will certainly pass along any updates that I have and hope to have something before the conclusion of this meeting, though, though maybe we won't go that late. The next topic on your agenda is downtown city employee office space. Boy, it feels like we just keep talking about this over and over and over again. Just to briefly summarize, we are currently in a game of musical chairs where we are moving CDJ's staff that was in the UniWay building to Marine View and doing a little bit of a shuffle here. I'm pointing over here because IT and finance, no, IT and HR right now are in the second story of City Hall. IT will move to Marie Drake, and we will get out of UniWay hopefully by the end of next month. So, that's a, been a really big push. But that is still considered a really temporary solution. And I think working through that has taught us a lot about challenges that we would have with a more permanent solution, a more permanent kind of solution split between City Hall and Marie Drake. So, the purpose of this memo is to talk more about the Burns Building as an opportunity for downtown city employees. If you recall, you gave the authority to enter into negotiations with the Permanent Fund Corporation, the company that owns, that manages property for the Permanent Fund Corporation, to lease two floors of the permanent, of the Burns Building. And we have been in negotiations with them back and forth. I do want to emphasize, the memo references a $2.85 square, square foot number. That is certainly not a final number. That is a number for reference. They wanted to make sure that I clarified that. That was a number that they gave us for a temporary lease. So, there's reason to believe there's movement up and down on that number. We have not agreed on terms. But we got to kind of have somewhere to start, right? To be able to have that conversation. So, just want to add that caveat. That number is certainly in line with the cost of downtown office space, generally speaking. And, you know, we pay about that at the C- Alaska building, but of course, that's a very, very nice building, probably one of the nicer buildings in, in Juneau. However, this memo really introduces a new concept, and that's the idea of purchasing two floors of the building as part of a business condo. And, you know, that idea came up in discussion. And so, we're, we're talking about kind of moving forward with that idea in this memo. The number that was, was thrown out there as a starting place, because of course, I, I'm like, I don't have, I can't, I don't even know if we have a, like, if I, if I can even play ball, right? Can I even bring anything to the assembly? It's $12 million for two floors of the building, and that, as noted in the memo, is twice the assessed value. The entire property is assessed at $9 million. So, we talked a little bit in the memo about available funds. We have about $14.5 million in the City Hall, and new City Hall appropriations that have been made. We've spent some of that money on furniture in, for Marie Drake employees. But that furniture would be repurposed at any kind of final destination. And, and furniture's not just chairs and desks. It's the little cubby walls and, you know, all the things that make a big open space like this into usable office space. I would recommend that whether we lease or enter into some purchase agreement for the Burns Building, we do the higher end of tenant improvements. If you recall, the last time we talked about this topic, we had a range of about $3.5 million to $5.25 million for tenant improvements. That's carpet and paint and, you know, moving a few things around. The higher end number allows us to reverse the floor plan a little bit and put offices in the middle. So, you know, my office would be in the middle instead of on the corner with all the windows. And that's a way to just let more employees get more natural light. And if you have had the opportunity to visit the Permanent Fund Corporation, they've reorganized their space like that, and it actually looks very professional in that facility. So, that brings the total cost, the total project cost with the tenant improvements, the, the higher end tenant improvements and the purchase and some money for developing a condo association at $17.5 million. You've got a, a table here that just kind of gains out the cost of rent versus the cost of owning. And, you know, after 10 years, if we rent the building, we're, you know, still renting the building. And after about 10 years, if we purchase the building, we have a nice office space that we've invested a lot of upkeep into. You'll notice that the model anticipates $650,000 a year in condo dues. I think that the corporation really wants to make sure that building is maintained very well. So, you know, my comfort, what I like about that number is, at the end of 10 years, we have a building that's, you know, well-maintained. Things are repaired and taken care of on a timely schedule. I do want to just, you know, emphasize that these, this isn't like a, you know, final offer. You haven't given me the authority to even enter into these negotiations. So, that's the purpose of bringing this information now, is, you know, talking about whether or not to entertain it, if it's something that, you know, you feel like is, is worth investing time and effort into. I think there will be some expense incurred in, you know, kind of figuring out some of the legal questions and figuring out how to move forward in that regard. So, happy to answer any questions. I feel like I have to yell, because I have my own personal fame here. That's kind of noisy.
Madam Mayor and then Ms. Adkinsen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, on page two of, or one of the, page 84, sorry, it says 3.5 to 5.25 tenant improvements. Are they included in the 17.5 million? And would they be the same number if we just leased the space?
Yes. Madam Leader?
Yes and yes.
Thank you. Ms. Adkinsen?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. In the memo, you talk about sort of the assessed price versus what they're asking for versus what it's been in the past and how we're not allowed to purchase property at a price that's above market value. And then you say it's kind of hard to determine what market value would be, because there's not any comparable buildings. But I imagine we do have to figure that out at some point in this process. Is, do we know moving forward how we're going to figure out if we're purchasing it at market value or not?
Madam Manager?
Yes. Our recommendation would be to hire a commercial appraisal, appraiser to do that analysis.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Ms. Adkinsen?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to bring up this, I guess, as a question. We have in the past overlooked or passed over opportunities for, you know, either long-term leases or owning buildings, because we felt it was sort of in conflict with what the voters had, you know, said with the City Hall measure. I know that this is a smaller, obviously, purchase price than it would be for a whole new City Hall. But are there any concerns that this does sort of conflict with what the voters said when they voted down the new City Hall?
Madam Manager?
Well, I mean, I do think that that is a matter of opinion and interpretation. From where I sit, I, I have actually put some thought into, okay, what if we just kept this building and we, like, did something with the paint and the carpet? Because I've actually tripped on the carpet in my office before, right? We got to do something. And then, we got to fix the windows. Okay, okay, well, Nate can make, work magic, Nate's our building maintenance supervisor. So, let's say we only spend like $5 or $7 million just getting this building by. Maybe there's something we can do in this room. I don't know, because this is, this is a big struggle. Then I'm like, and then we could paint Marie Drake. Oh, but we don't have enough parking in Marie Drake. So, how many people could be moved to Marie Drake? And then we're a 15-minute walk. Well, so then we need parking there and here for, like, city employees going back and forth all the time. And we're going to have to spend another, I don't know, millions of dollars at Marie Drake to make it even inhabitable, right? And then after 10 years, we'll have spent, you know, maybe it's only the 16, 16, 14, who knows how many millions? Not, you know, buckets and buckets of money, because we've seen the cost estimates that are like buckets of money to make this building, you know, give it 25 more years of life. And, and I'm sure, you know, we've seen similar numbers for Marie Drake. And I just, like, it, it, it more than doesn't make sense. It doesn't cancel out fiscally or operationally. And so, I really come to you with the, like, this is the best option that I've been able, with the help of staff, of course, to come up with. And I'm not answering your question, except for I just can't, I can't get to, there's like no status quo option right now, I guess, is, is what is frustrating.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Adkinsen? We have Mr. Kelly, and then we have Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'm actually ready for a comment. So, if Madam Mayor has a question, I can take my turn.
Okay. Madam Mayor?
Thank you. There was some concern of parking at this facility. How are we addressing that?
Madam Manager?
Thank you. So, the building comes with 87 parking spaces. We have 165 downtown parking permits. And so, we would have to care for the remainder of that parking. Keep in mind, the Burns Building solution also includes using the JST Admin Building that has 17 workstations. Unfortunately, Marie Drake and JST Admin don't, also don't come with a lot of parking. We've talked about using about 10 spaces from the fire hall. We have, are actively engaged with Dawson, who owns the parking lot right across from there, trying to, you know, get them to, to give us some of that parking. They, of course, use that space actively as their lay-down yard. So, there's, but that's a possibility that we're exploring. But the, I mean, we don't have a great solution for 165 parking spaces. We have a great solution for like 100 of those spaces. So, also looking at some incentives for people, you know, commuting by bus or by walking and using the 450 Whittier site, which is about a third of a mile from the Burns Building as an alternate parking spot. Acknowledging that we would have to reserve at the Burns Building parking for ADA and, and the public, of course. So, we're like, you know, three-quarters of the way on parking. And the, it feels, it feels really good, because Marie Drake is so much worse from a parking perspective. And, but, but I would acknowledge that we don't have the parking completely solved.
Thank you, Madam Manager. We'll probably save comments for after a motion, but questions until then. Madam Mayor, you had another question?
Sorry. I have lots of questions. So, looking at page 85, you said significant maintenance and operations of $650,000 a year. Again, is that both if we owned it and if we leased it? Is that correct? Or you expect that to be less if we leased it?
Madam Manager?
So, the way I understand it is the, those maintenance costs would be included in our rent if we leased the facility. And whereas, there would be a condo association due if we owned this facility, and the numbers reflect that difference.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Madam Mayor has a motion.
All right. Thinking along Ms. Adkinsen's comment and the fact that there's only six here tonight, I have a little trouble doing the first part as a motion, so somebody else might want to tackle that later. But I think we should wait on that until we get some more information. So, in order to get more information, but I do think we need the second half of that. So, I would move to hire mutually agreed upon appraiser to value the building as a business condo and get some more information. And I ask for an honest consent on that.
Are there any objections? Ms. Adkinsen?
I'm going to withdraw my objection at the end of this. But I, I do just want to preface by saying I'm uncomfortable moving forward on this in any way, shape, or form. I was not happy about the idea of leasing state space for 10 years, and I am deeply uncomfortable with the idea of purchasing it. And I think I'll have opportunities to go into that far in more detail later, but I want to put that on the record now, and I remove my objection.
Thank you, Ms. Adkinsen. And Mr. Kelly, I'm very sorry. I skipped you. Please. Please.
Thank you. I actually was probably going to wait and speak until afterwards because my intention is also to remove this objection, my objection. But I am feeling that this is a little bit different than what the voters turned down in at least a couple ways. I think, for one, it is a lot less in price. For two, we're not building a new place, this place already exists. And third, one of the objections that I think people had was that we let this place fall into disrepair and therefore needed another place. That was what a lot of people raised as a possible concern. What I like about what we're estimating out here is that we are actually looking at the figures for maintaining, keeping the maintenance up on the place. And so I, at this point, am a little more comfortable with this proposal than I would be with a proposal to build a new place. So I have removed my objection.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Madam Mayor.
So I would agree with Mr. Kelly somewhat that this is a little bit different. And one of the things that people said is look at a building that's already there and see if we can do it. What I hesitate at is it's pretty expensive, so that's why I said let's appraise it and see if it's still as expensive as they think it is going to be. So that's my big bulk of it. And I would like the public to weigh in and now that it's out in the public and we're thinking about this, I think we start getting public comment on it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will, oh, Ms. Uscandi.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. My comments slash questions to managers about the first part that Madam Mayor declined to make a motion on, maybe depending on what the manager says, I might make a motion on. But that's, it's not related to what we're talking about right now with the appraiser. So.
Okay, thank you. Are there further comments about what we're talking about with the appraiser or responding to comments that have been made? I will just make one comment. I guess I have to object to Madam Mayor's motion and then I'll remove my objection. I very much understand where Ms. Atkinson is coming from because there have been concerns about capital creep for a very long time in our city. I will say that other buildings that we were interested in, for example, the DNR building, which would have been a lovely city hall, was bought right out from under us. So that happens. And I, we have lost a lot of state jobs and we don't have a forecast for gaining a lot of state jobs back. And we desperately need a city hall. So I'll remove my objection. And are there any objections to the mayor's motion for the appraisal? Seeing none, that motion passes. Ms. Uscandies, I believe you had something to say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for Madam Manager. And it's about the timeline because I think you're right, there is not really a status quo. So I agree that there's six of us sitting here and I always like, there's a lot of consequential things on this one agenda, so it's not a bad thing when you hear from people. But the speed of government is also, you know, pick your favorite tortoise, kind of slow. It's glacial. And, and so to that end, if we were to do something like hold it, hold this in committee before you can even start negotiations, how much do you think that would slow things down by? Because, and I'm not sure that was the mayor's intention, but let's say we pass this out of committee and give you that, go ahead. Negotiations might go on as long as, guess.
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. It's a good one. So we have extended our lease with other properties till July 1 of next year. So that's the timeline that we're operating under. I do think that, you know, I've learned that large bureaucracies, bureaucracies that are governments can actually move as slow or slower than, than government. But I really feel like with the mayor's motion to do work on getting a, hiring an appraiser, you know, that gives us information. And that's what we would need for negotiations and what the assembly would need to make a decision. So I'm, I think that that keeps the ball moving while keeping the topic in the cow where, where you can kind of spend some more time chewing on it.
Ms. Uscandies.
Okay, fantastic. That's reassuring.
Are there further comments or questions or motions? Seeing none. I believe we are agreeing to keep the, this in the cow where it will come back with information about the appraisal. Thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you very much. And thank you to the assembly. Moving on, and I do apologize for this being a long meeting. We next have Capital Civic Center. And I have been in conversation with the partnership and I have agreed, and I've mentioned this before, I've agreed after I'm off the assembly to help raise funds. So would like to pass the gavel to Madam Mayor and ask the assembly if they feel comfortable with me stating that and participating in the conversation. Mr. Attorney, is that the right way to answer, ask that question?
Through the mayor. So I think that's a setup and if the assembly disagrees or wants to go the different route, they can, they can say so.
Thank you.
Ms. Uscandies.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just, I guess, I know you mentioned that before, so I already knew that going into it and I appreciate you making us aware of it. Do you mean you're going to volunteer or you're going to be employed by?
Very good question. I stand to gain nothing personally. This is simply a volunteer effort, yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, is the assembly good with Ms. Hale recusing herself and still staying up at the dais? Because that's unusual for us.
Madam Mayor, I'm not recusing myself. I'm handing you the gavel so that I don't run it and I'm asking, do I need, is it okay if I don't recuse myself so I can participate?
Oh, I apologize. I've been so upset.
Thank you.
Okay, is everybody okay with Ms. Hale not recusing herself? Okay, because she's going to get no financial gain. Sorry for that. Okay. So, okay, Madam Manager, Capital Civic Center update and next steps.
Thank you, Mayor Weldon. So I think at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Banghart up to give the presentation that's in the packet. And then I would like to walk you through the questions that would help staff move forward that are outlined in the memo on page 86. Please, look, we have two seats.
Hey, Mr. Cloud and Mr. Banghart, would you guys introduce yourselves and then go ahead with your presentation?
Bob Banghart, I serve as the executive director for the partnership, which is the nonprofit that's assembling the funding and overseeing building of this building in a positive nature.
I'm John Cloud and we co-chair of the partnership.
Remember, you have to, yeah, have to hit the green button. There we go.
This one, there you go. And I'm John Cloud and I'm co-chair of the partnership board.
And a great voice because he sings in a lyric opera. Anyway, go ahead with your presentation, please.
Okay, I'll just walk you through these slides really quickly. This is a composite image of the existing Centennial Hall in yellow. The New Jack or the Arts and Culture section that we have at about 65% of design in blue. And the potential encapsulation of the connector between the two is in the peach. And this is just to reference the potential building on the surface of the lots that we have. It's difficult to see, but on the far left of the diagram, the top language says current location of the new, of the armory. And it's right there. Oh. There we go. All right. So the next slide is more detail of the building we have at 65%, which is, shows the theater. This area with the round tables is approximately the same size as the armory with the addition of the warming kitchen and storage space. It does not take into consideration the front of house in the current armory. And then just gives more definition, we've been working with this design for probably five, six years now. And it was well-vetted by the community when we went into our initial encapsulation of space needed. The next slide is the second floor that shows the mezzanine, support spaces, offices along the north face of the building, mechanical spaces. Again, this is all part of the building that we had developed in, when 2017, I believe. The next slide is where we're at currently in our fundraising efforts on this. We've had a really strong year this year in funding requests coming in. We just found out today officially that we can announce the Murdoch Foundation grant and the Block Foundation grant. We've been gaining steam with local supporters. We have had almost, well, about $3 million pledged locally from donors for the project. So we're continuing to see interest. We've been working extensively with our delegation in DC. Murkowski's office has been very, very supportive in shepherding us through CDS funding. We have not succeeded in getting to base yet, but she keeps working us closer to the finish line. And then we just found out today that we may have some support coming from Peltola's office. And then we have been in discussion with Senator Sullivan's office too and how this facility may support some of the efforts to homeport the cutter. What we are after in this approach is to convince you guys that, one, we are still alive, working hard on this project and making headway. And we'd like to enter into an agreement with you guys to pick up where we left off, which was in '22, when we got the estimated costs in for the Civic Center in total, which was something that the city put $2 million down on, a couple hundred thousand spent on that concept. Base price came in way over everybody's expectations. We went back to the mat and reduced the cost by about $33 million. And what we're looking to do now is to prove out that process that we have gone through with the building that we initiated, which was to take it all the way through to 65% and do the pro formas that prove the building's economic viability. We'd like to go through that process again to get the community input, define that space in between those two buildings, what the impacts on both buildings will be, what the potential usages are, and what the pro forma can eventually become a value to community, both from the community aspect and through the business world. I think we had a discussion today in leadership and we have, we prepared to put $2.5 down for every dollar you have put down in this process to gain this information because we cannot, to use your chicken and the egg analogy, we can't go forward until we get more defined costing and utilization of this space. And we can't do that until we put some money on the table to take it to the next step. So that's why we're here tonight in hoping that we can swing this as an opportunity to joint venture with y'all to make this real so that we can bring substantive numbers of actual costs for both building and operating and potentials for utilization to the table so we can evaluate it to see if we're overreaching or not with that encapsulated area we call the commons. Right now, we've got it at 15,000 square feet, which I think is excessive. We don't think that's what we want to do, but we don't know until we run the numbers. The next slide is what we've kind of put out there as a potential for a joint venture on getting this project up and running that shares the responsibility of development and management between the partnership, which would be putting up a substantive portion of the funds for this building, and the city, which would be the eventual owners of the building. This model is one that I used when we did the APK building for the State Museum. That position of project partner, manager, owner representative is where I live and was responsible to all the parties involved to make sure that we had a level of communication and clarity in both the design, the construction, and the expenditures. So I know this works and I think it would work well for this project, especially that we would be looking at it as a joint venture. The last slide is kind of unicorns. It's, it's the schedule that I put together based on moving forward and taking the next 12 months, starting in October, to do the necessary planning to get us to a point where we can execute construction documents for this project. And then that takes it through to completion. We really are earnest about wanting this to happen and in that, we're willing to put that money on the table. We have it in the bank. I can show you the accounts if you want to make sure. But you know, we really want to stress that why we're pushing is to take advantage of having a full set of documents and numbers that show operational costs that allow us to go to the major funders, to the federal government, to the legislature and say, this is a real project. This is a project the community is going to utilize and it's a project that's going to build community over the long term. And this is an investment. It's not something we're just like doing. This is like a 50-year investment in this community's development and that's how we're perceiving it. And I don't know, I'm sure everybody's got their opinion on that, but it's, it'll be long in play by the time, you know, we're gone, hopefully. So anyway, I take, John, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, through the chair, just one thing. I've had the opportunity to speak to various iterations of the assembly a number of times over, gosh, I think it's been seven years since I've been on the board. And to be perfectly honest, I'm not sure I ever believed there'd be a time I could sit in front of me and say, we have secured 60% of the funding for this building, 60%. And more than that, we've identified the sources for the last 40, but for those kind of sources, you need these kind of plans. They're not going to give you that last money to put you over the top till you can show them, this is exactly what it's going to look like, this is exactly what it's going to do. And we need, for a project like this, you can't have too much information from the community and you can't have too much information going out to the community. This is our chance to do one big last communication exchange back and forth with this community. We've retained the Cedar Group to assist us in that operation. And like I said, I, I as one member of this board, I'm just so excited that we're in the position we are today.
Thank you both for your presentation. Who has questions? Quiet crowd. So, okay, Mr. Smith, what's your question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to check, you know, in the past, there has been agreement with some other organizations in town, Juno Chamber of Commerce, Travel Juno. Has that level of agreement or support been reached on kind of this design or this idea?
We've been in communication with them and they do support it. We have letters from them in our packet that we submitted to the federal government showing community support for the project, yes. I can share that. We have about 25 letters from various community organizations.
A follow-up, Mr., or another question?
Another question. Is it, Mr. Banghart, you said, so there's a, we have a list of things on, you know, page two of this memo, parking analysis, design of commons. Those are the things that you guys are looking to get an okay to pay, I mean, for, and you said matching, didn't you? Did you say?
We have a 2.5 to 1 match with you guys.
Okay.
That's what we're offering. And yes, to your question.
For these?
We need to move those elements forward so we can make an educated decision.
Gotcha. Do you? Follow-up. This is actually?
This is, this is a follow-up because we do have other hands.
Okay, very good. Do we know how much it is going to cost to get these things, these four documents? Do you know what that?
We have a thumbnail based on percentage of projection of project cost. And we are looking at, and again, this depends totally on the scope of that commons area because those funds would be coming from the appropriation already done through the joint venture of Northwind. joint venture of Northwind and Genshin Yorba Wall, where Northwind is our architect of record for the other portion. We're looking at anywhere between $4 million, 3.5 to 4. That just depends. We also want to bleed in a pro forma in that.
Ms. Hughes-Cannings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think where Mr. Smith was getting, and thank you, both of you, for being here. What Mr. Banghart was just touching on is the nature of my question. So when we last spoke, not touching on the commons, which needs design, which costs money, and parking analysis, which costs money, but percentage of design for the design you already have, what, how would you characterize that? What percent design?
When we left the project, we were at 65%, which is the stopping point prior to going forward with construction documents. We've estimated that about 75% of that 65% would be applicable for moving forward with the total facility design. The challenges are, we would be raising this building that we have already designed up about 18 inches to meet the floor level with Centennial Hall, and shifting it to the east to be the proximity. Those are, you know, where that shift is, is yet to be defined, but that's why only about 70% of those documents. We'd have to go back in and reapply some of our design fees to change HVAC integrations, foundation integrations, site work integrations, those kinds of things that dominate a project in the beginning days.
Okay, so to verify that, 70% of what you already have is applicable. You could re, you'd have to rerun the analysis on parts of it because it's slightly off, but a bulk of it is applicable to the overall design. And of the piece that you have designed, you're at 65% design, which is where you stop before proceeding to actual construction documents. Okay, thank you for that. And the, sorry, follow-up?
Certainly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And so, and the estimated cost to get that other piece that you need, the assemblies portion of that would be 3.5 million to 4 million?
Well, the 3.5 to 4 million dollars would be the aggregate of adding our portions in with the city's money. So the city's right now, this, I believe, is approximately 1.8, 1.7 in remaining funds. We would match what of that we use for this process with our own funds to bring the entire package up to a 65% design level, and then we would start looking at moving it towards construction documents with the remainder of those funds.
Thank you. I don't know where a follow-up ends and a new question begins, so maybe I'll pause there and...
Okay. Anybody else have a question before I ask a couple of questions? I'm just making it clear, because you said you're going to do a pro forma. Are you going to do a pro forma again on the original design and on the commons or for the whole project? What are you doing there?
I think it would be impending on us to do a pro forma on the entire facility as designed as a unit, so that we know the interplay between Centennial Hall, the commons area, and the arts and culture section, because there's going to be a synergy that's created there. And we may be, and this is coming from dialogues with Travel Juno, we may be looking at the opportunity to host larger events with more multifaceted aspects to it. And that's what we have to explore, is what kind of return we can see on utilizing this for larger events than we currently have the capacity to handle.
Thank you. Ms. Hughes-Cannings, did you come up with your next question?
Tons, thank you, Madam Mayor. So to touch back to what we were talking about before with the funding, 1.8 million is the assemblies piece, and really, you're here to say, we're really gaining speed and we want permission to use that 1.8 million to move to this next step. Is that correct?
Correct, but there is a caveat. We still need to work up an agreement with the city to make this a joint venture of some sort. So it's not like you just hand us a check and we go for it. We have work to do with the city manager and with Public Works to make sure that the system that we employ and that we design has the potential to be able to take us through negotiations, through design, into construction documents, into potential building. So it's got to be thought through. It's, it's not just like, here's the money, go for it.
Okay, thank you for that. Mad, a follow-up for that?
Certainly.
Manager Custer, you look like you're starting to say something, and if you weren't, then I might ask you to...
That was going to be what I was going to say. Ms. K, Madam, Madam, it's getting me a long night. Madam Manager, do you have a comment?
No, I am just happy to walk the assembly through when the timing is appropriate, how I understand the next steps are, and kind of what that level of commitment is, both from a funding and kind of timeline perspective, when you're ready for that conversation.
Okay. Do you have any further questions, Ms. Hughes-Cannings? Because I have one left.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My question, Manager Custer, is in relation to that 1.8 million, because in the past, I've asked when the partnership, partnership came up and this building came up, I think probably when we were talking during the budget process about putting the CLIA dollars forward. At that point, I was looking for additional design because we'd gotten to a point where, with the 1.8 million, and then it seemed like it was sitting there. So could you describe from the city's perspective what those funds are there for and what they've been used for and what they're doing there?
Madam Manager?
Yes, so $2 million was appropriated, I think it probably says in the memo, in 2022, I believe, to design, for design for Capitol Civic Center. And we spent about $200,000 of that $2 million on a design that you last saw in 2022 that really was all the things that the community wanted in Centennial Hall, meeting rooms, expanded lobby, a second story, HVAC improvements, and all the things for the performing arts component in really a very, very much this one great big project. And so that project just, it just became really expensive, over $75 million price tag. And so the partnership has come back with phasing that idea of a Capitol Civic Center. We really can't use that design work. I think what we did a lot of through that process wasn't design. I mean, there certainly were pictures that we looked at, but a lot of it was community and stakeholder engagement and outreach, and do you really need this many rooms, and where can we give here, and where can we, where can we flex there? So from that original appropriation, which, you know, doesn't necessarily have to be spent on design, we have 1.8 million. I, it is my understanding that the, we are not requesting the entire 1.8 million to do steps one through four listed on page two of your memo, but rather just the authority to proceed with spending some funds to answer those specific questions.
Yeah.
Trying to remember my question.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the memo, there is a question posed there, is there a need for the commons? I guess, is there a need for the commons?
Mr. Banghart?
If we listen to the constituents that we respond to for this project, yes, especially when we talk to Travel Juno or some of the larger presenters in town like the Celebration, the public market, some of the larger users, Folk Festival. But what that commons consists of is an open question, and that's what we're trying to suss out at this point. So, yeah, we do feel that there's a need because there's been an expressed desire that we not do a standalone arts and culture section, that we take advantage of combining these facilities, and that's what we've come to call the commons. I call it Town Square, little different take on it. But again, that's what we're trying to work through and need the community to come back to us and say, we have this potential. Do you support that? If so, how can this get done? And because we're not meeting all of the requirements that Travel Juno wanted to have, especially in the breakout rooms, we would be able to repurpose some of the work as we do the redesign for the arts and culture section to meet some of those demands. So again, we're, yeah, that first concept that came in at 75,000, that was just, I think the $2 million was to go to basically a schematic design, which has been about 30% of a design, and we never went there because we got scared of what we came up with.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That triggered what my question was, was along that lines. So when you look at the commons and other parts of the facility, what would be beneficial is if we do come up with a design that helps us not have to build a second floor to Centennial Hall, because one of the big expenses of the second floor, of course, was an elevator. So that would be nice to see as that part of the design, so it would eliminate the need for a second floor. So is that a good selling point for me?
We eliminated the second floor due to costs, also access issues. If you remember, on the more detailed drawing of the second floor of the arts and culture section, we had a host of office spaces in the back. Those could be repurposed for meeting rooms. We also looked at partitioning the room, we call the community room, into three spaces, much like you see the main ballroom done at Centennial Hall. So again, we would go through and vet how many opportunities we had to meet Juno Travel or Travel Juno's request for meeting rooms, breakout spaces, et cetera, still preserving the core elements of the arts and culture aspect as we could. So, yeah, second floors is a killer. It really is.
Ms. Hughes-Cannings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We spoke about feathering in the pro forma, mixing that in as part of that. Is that where we would see operations and maintenance? To what extent do we, with what we have now, would you be looking at, I mean, is that part of what you seek to get as well, operations and maintenance for the whole building or...
Correct. The entire building, we would go through, and we need it to a certain level of design before we can actually make solid estimated costs for operations. We need to know our systems, and then we also need to know availability of rental spaces so we can apply our market study to that.
Anything further, Ms. Hughes-Cannings?
I don't think so.
Ms. Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure either. I didn't understand your question or didn't understand the answer, but I think you asked the question, would the Capitol Civic Center get, eliminate the need for a second floor on Centennial Hall? Is that correct?
That was my question, and I think they answered it.
And so you said the Capitol Civic Center would have a second floor?
The arts and culture section has that second floor.
The second floor, okay, and there's that office space there.
Because of the mezzanine for the theater.
Okay, super.
So it's already taken into consideration. We would not employ a second floor on Centennial Hall.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Smith, do you have a motion for us? And if you need, oh, sorry, who am I going for? Ms. Kestner? Do you want to talk through the memo? I'm sorry.
You know, if you are...
We heard the presentation and I forgot that you...
If you were ready for a motion, I, you know, you won't...
No, we would love to hear you talk. We'd just love to hear you talk.
So the first item that we're asking for feedback on is parking. Eliminate, using that common space for commons takes 40,000 parking spots. Do you know that, I just feel like I live and breathe parking analysis and the need for parking, and I don't even drive barely ever. But anyway, parking. So the first item we're asking for is direction on, you know, spending some, some money to look at parking in the area. It's very complicated because there's a lot of shared parking agreements between the state and Jack and Centennial Hall. So that's number one. And I'm, I'll just, with your permission, Mayor Weldon, they're not super complicated, so I'm just going to talk through them. And then I think getting feedback from this body on the need for the commons would be really useful. You know, when we originally entertained the idea at a staff level online, I don't want to heat 15,000 square feet. Maybe we could just have a, you know, covered or enclosed walkway. That, of course, takes away a lot of utility and do something later, right? Do something later that's common, that's the commons. That takes a lot of utility away from the idea of a joint building. So just like getting some opinions on that. And to be clear, when I'm requesting design for a commons, joining the two facilities, you know, I don't, I would not bring, I would not design something to 100% and bring it back to you. I would say, here's some visions and here's some costs, cost estimates of those visions, and bring that back to this body. The next part is expanding the project to include elements of Centennial Hall renovation. The most natural elements, which we don't have to do before the construction of Capitol Civic Center, but would be efficient to do, are eliminating the pinch point in the lobby and HVAC improvements. I don't have a great cost estimate for you. I do have one from like 2019 on those projects that puts it, you know, between $2 and $3 million. Now, I'm hesitant to even, you know, use a cost estimate that that's, that is that old, but certainly part of your direction could be, yeah, let's look, we know that adds cost to the project, but let's, let's look at prioritizing those things. And then the fourth thing that I'm looking for feedback on is this idea of a public-private partnership. I certainly have some reservations with, you know, how that could work, but I also see a lot of pros on how that could work. We're both very engaged stakeholders, right? The CBJ is going to own this building. You're bringing a lot of money to the table, and you're a core user of the building. There's a commitment from CBJ for Jack to manage the facility for the first 10 years. So I need, I need resources basically to explore what that could look like and look at other communities. So all in all, I apologize that I don't have like a dollar amount ask. I just felt difficult to cost estimate that, but, you know, I guess, you know, each step is kind of a, is an, at the information gathering stage, rather than the like, bring you a completed project stage.
Any questions about Ms. Kestner's memo? Ms. Hale?
I do have a question about parking, and it's interesting because we just dealt with parking relative to Telephone Hill. That area has a lot of state parking in it, and most often, events at Centennial Hall or at the Jack are at night. And so, you know, we've all driven past many times the Kmart parking lot, which I have never seen full. So I just wonder, when you pave paradise and put up a parking lot, when we do a parking analysis, does it take into account things like time of day? Or would we be trying to require, you know, a Kmart-style parking lot that is, has never been full in my life?
Ms. Kestner?
Thank you. So that is the nature of the challenge of the current parking arrangement right now. So both of the facilities, the Jack and Centennial Hall, have parking requirements. But because to meet those parking requirements in code, they use shared use agreements with the state parking, which is mostly CBJ parking that we lease to the state, we found it really difficult to tease out what, what the actual requirements are for the parking. And then the other piece that's difficult is how do we classify the commons, right? Is the commons really space that requires additional parking or is it not? Because we don't have like city code, commons requires this much parking. So we definitely do, right now, to meet the parking, the legally required parking needs, use those, that time of day shared use agreement, and that's part of what we want to like figure out better.
Anything further? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I'll just kind of, again, it's, it sounds like there's agreement between staff and the partnership on, on needs, so I'm going to support that. I would move... I would move that the assembly allow or direct staff to spend from the 1.8 million of funds set aside for the Capital Civic Center for any of the four items listed on page two of the memo, which includes the parking analysis, design of the commons, legal research on public-private partnerships, and designing cost estimates for the Centennial Hall, you know, done in concert with the construction of the Capital Civic Center.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any objection? Ms. Hughes-Cannies?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Object for purposes of the question to the manager. I've heard the partnership characterize, you know, it's leveraging the city's dollars to figure out some of this stuff, and they're at a sticking point where they need that to finish the project, they feel like. I understand that it was difficult to cost out some of these requests, but do you see this reasonably as being up to that entire amount, 1.8 million, which is currently sitting there, but I believe has been sitting there just for this chicken and egg reason, because we don't want to spend it without getting further along?
Madam Manager?
No, I do not foresee spending 1.8 million dollars on this. I mean, I could give you a number, and you could put a fence on it. I mean, like, you could say, don't spend more than $150,000 on, on these four things, and I would hope to come in underneath that, understanding that that also doesn't get us very far down the road, right? That just gets us to another decision-making point. But I really see this as, not just information gathering, but also saying, yeah, let's, you know, let's, let's give it a go. Like, partnership's ready to give it a go, CBJ's ready to give it a go, let's do some of that work.
I think a number with a fence, I'm ready to give it a go. I'm not sure I'm 1.8 million ready to give it a go on this night, but that doesn't mean I don't have faith in the project. So that sounds fine.
Mr. Smith, do you have an amendment to your motion?
Based on the manager's verbal comments, I trust that she's not going to spend 1.8 million.
Never mind. Any objection to Mr. Smith's motion? Seeing none, the motion has passed. Thank you, guys, for coming here tonight, and I'll hand the gamble back over to Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and yes, thank you very much for being here tonight. Do we have an update, Madam Manager, on the flood?
Yeah, the last update that I have is that the information link in the wireless emergency announcement has been published as a press release, and that the team is actively doing social media when the shelter opens, which would have been an hour ago. So not much of an update, but I know that Denise is pulling the late shift and Robert has the early shift on this event, so we will definitely have more updates to come.
Thank you, Madam Manager. I appreciate, appreciate that. I am looking also at the, the little graph that they have, and at 8:00 PM, the flood stage was 13.56 feet, which is a couple feet short of what they're predicting, so. What's that? It did, but now it doesn't, so, not slowing, it looks like. Thank you very much for that update. Are there further staff reports? Our next meeting date is, when is our next meeting date?
September 4th?
I think it is September 4th. That's been tossed around.
September 4th.
And I believe we're ready for adjournment. Thank you all for staying through this, and thank you to those in the audience for staying through this, and this meeting is adjourned, 8:50, 8:00 PM.